Thank you, everybody, for your patience. We had some technical difficulties there, but no business had been conducted. This was just right after public comments. So now we are getting back into the program with 10.1 business reports, and I will turn it over to Director Miller.
Thank you, President Miller. Members of the board, tonight's business report will provide a recap of where we stand with outstanding state payments as of March 31, 2025, and the cash roll forward for the capital projects fund as of February 28, 2025. Outstanding payments from the state of Illinois for FY '25 totaled $2,122,643.75 as of March 31, 2025. For our ed fund, there's $29,195.35 due from Drivers Education Services and $9,261.12 due from Food Services. Both of these are in the ed fund. A total of $254,195.73 is due from special projects, and $1,829,991.55 is due to the Transportation Fund.
Is that... Sorry to interrupt you.
Not a problem.
Par for the course this time of year for those 0 to 30 days?
Yeah, we are at... Everything is less than 30 days, which is what we kind of want. They'll post the voucher, and then they're paying those out within 30 days.
Okay.
Historically, for the past couple of years, this is what it's been looking like. There were times, pre-COVID, that 90 days, 120 days was not uncommon.
Yeah.
Yeah. The capital funds revenue and expenditures incurred during the month of February 2025 is as follows. Investments for the capital projects show a beginning balance of $57,512, sorry, $512,249.80. Total revenues in the investment funds, this is dividends and interest, was $492,426.34. Bond draws and expenses for the period came to $6,458,995.79. This yields an ending balance of $51,545,680.35. The district received $1,172,595 in sales tax receipts in February. This was for the November reporting period. Since 2019, the district has received $66 million in sales tax with a 12-month average collection of $1.145 million. Currently, the district's sales tax money is being used to pay the principal and interest on bonds sold for its capital projects. As of February 2028, sorry, February 28, 2025, the district has $7,936... Sorry, I'm going to try that again. $7,936,634 in its community facility sales tax savings account. The next payment of $9,276,919 will be due on June 1 of 2025. At that time, the district has a... will have a projected surplus of just over $2 million. A total of $12,520,963 will be paid out in the next two bond payments. The chart on the screen right now, the blue is what we have in the bank. The green is what we need to save in order to make our payment by June, and then the orange will be additional, what we need to save in order to make our payment in December. At this point, we are not expecting to have any trouble saving that amount of money in those timeframes. President Miller, members of the board, this concludes the business report for April 7, 2025. Do you have any questions?
Can you bring that last screen up one more time?
Hmm.
So the June payment, we're still waiting on May and April collections?
This is actually February's numbers, so we will have March and April's payments contributing towards this. May possibly as well, but we usually pay that payment for June about two weeks early to make sure we have it paid. We do not want to be delinquent on that payment.
So is it... I mean, it looks like, like you said, there's going to be no problem making that payment. Is it your goal to stay this conservative with the balance because we're going to have these payments coming up routinely?
Yeah. So the June payment is right around that $9 to $10 million every June. The December payment, we're just paying interest, so it's a lot less. So overall, we're between the 12 and 13 and 1/2 million over the next few years. So yeah, we're trying to save that money, too. The hopes as well is, as we're doing more building projects, we could pay some with cash. We will also have the option in the next couple of years to reinvest our bonds and get a better interest rate. So that's an option, too. But in order to do that, we could pay off the bonds or just get a better rate as well. So wanting to keep those options open as well as we're looking into the future.
All right. Thank you.
So Mr. Miller, $12,005,000, you know, just calculating just right now at the 1.145, it looks like we're going to have close to $14 million. So this shouldn't... I mean, if we just continue to do the average, we should be okay.
Yeah.
Do we see a point, you know, with rising interest rates and things like that, that the 1.1 million over 12 months is not going to be enough to cover for the June and December payments as we go forward?
No, we're not. We're not. We've locked in our interest rates with our bond sales, so we know... We have a payment plan, just kind of like your mortgage. We know exactly what we're paying on our principal and interest for each month until those are paid off. So we could project out into, you know, the 2030s what exactly we're paying out each month. The 12-month average that I'm giving you, I'm doing that because I'm taking away the first couple of years where we did our sales tax, which we had sub $1 million months quite often. So I wanted to get... This is what we're looking at right now. We don't expect sales taxes to decrease. They might increase. So at this point, we have really no concern about making these payments. Working with PMA and Stifel, they've built our bond payments in such a way that, looking at the conservative nature of our sales tax, all our payments will be able to be made.
And if there is a surplus, you know, let's say we're looking at 12.5, you know, if there's a surplus, you know, 14 million, what can we do with the difference of the 1.5 million?
Well, we're limited with sales tax money that we can only spend on building projects.
Correct.
So what I'm kind of wanting to do is build up a pool of money that we can use to either pay off bonds when they come due. We will have bonds... There's a certain amount of times that you have to keep bonds on the books before you're allowed to pay them off. So if we can build up an amount of money where we can, when those come due, we can pay off and then get a different or a lower interest rate on what's left, that would kind of be my desire. Or, as we get into some of our other building projects, like O and Marsh. O and Marsh's projected cost is $30 million. We sold bonds for that, right? If we had $14 million in the bank, then there's nothing saying we couldn't just pay cash for the 14 million of that 30 and then only bond out for the 15. So just other ways that we can look at using that money that we're trying to be conservative in saving.
Well, you know, once again, thanks to the taxpayers for...
Definitely.
...voting for the 1%, and thank you for good fiscal management. And, you know, one more reason, shop local.
Yeah.
Because it stays here. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Any more discussion? Okay. Well, thank you for the report, but don't go anywhere. We're moving along to 10.2, which is the fiscal year 2425 amended budget presentation. Right back to Director Miller.
And this is this current year's budget?
Yes.
Just want to point that out.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, President Miller. Members of the board, I present to you the 2025 amended budget. The Business Department has the opportunity each year to amend the original budget that was voted on in September. There's actually school code that says if we spend 10% over any of our fund balances, or sorry, any of our fund expenditures in the original budget, we have to do an amended budget. We do not have to do this amended budget, but the district chooses to do so every year. That way, we can more align our revenues and expenditures after having six months of the school year spoken for. This process for us takes place every May and June where we ask the board to vote and approve the amended budget, but there is a timeline process that we have to go through. So 30 days before we vote, the board votes on the amended budget. We have to make that available to the public. So on April 4, which was last Friday, we placed the budget into the district office for public inspection, if anyone wanted to see that. I'm presenting to you the budget today. We will go over the numbers, and then on May 5, we will have a public hearing, and you'll be asked to approve the amended budget. That does give us one week in the middle, a board meeting on April 21, that we can have discussion and questions from the board. I want to state now, I will not be present at the April 21 board meeting. My Assistant Director, Angie Burris, will be present during the business report, so I'm thankful that she will be doing that. So I'm just asking you if you have any questions, if you could email me ahead of time, and then we can prepare with Angie the answers for you at that time. Not to say you can't have questions during that board meeting as well, but if you have questions, please email those to me. So upon completion of our yearly audit, we are able to get a finalized fund balance in each of our district funds. The four blue lines, the ed, O and M, and transportation, working cash, those are the district's operating funds. When we are talking about the required fund balance of 15% per board policy, we are specifically talking about these four items. And so these are audited from the AFR that was presented last month, and these are the audited fund balances. So these numbers are representative of the expected position of the district on June 30, 2025, so the end of this school year, based on estimations of 100% of expenditures and a conservative estimate of revenues. Same way we did the tentative budget, we worked the amended budget. There is one change in this budget. If you were to go back and look at the tentative budget, you'll see some numbers inflated here. Inflated is probably not the right word. They're just bigger. And the reason why is, in the tentative budget, we did not include our grant money, ESER, Title I. Some of our smaller ones, like Title IV, because we know those are just kind of flow-through. The budget in and the budget out are the exact same. So those were not included. We spent about $20 million in grant money this year. So if you were to go back and look at the tentative budget and the numbers here for revenues and expenditures, you'll see about a $20 million difference between revenues and expenditures. So for our operating fund budget, the total revenues, we're expecting to have 242 million. Our expected expenditures, 265 million. And again, these include our major operating funds of education, O and M, transportation. Can we go on to the next slide, Julie? So in the original budget, there was a deficit of $2.1 million. In our amended budget, we have a projected deficit, and that has increased to $23.5 million. So there is an increase in the deficit. This increase was realized in two funds, the ed fund and the transportation fund, and I will speak on those in the next few slides as we talk about those individual funds. When calculated, the fund balance and the revenue ratio to the operating funds for the FY '25 amended budget is 17.8%. So if we were to look at our operating funds on June 30, 2025, we should have a fund balance of 17.8%. This is not including the 95% spend that we are currently using. So I'm estimating with the 95% spend, we will be closer to a 22% fund balance. We also have a... Sorry, Julie, back one side. We do still have a working cash fund balance that we maintain at $15.5 million. So as we break down the major funds, we'll take a look at the ed fund first. For FY '25 amended budget, the revenues in the ed fund were $207.6 million. Expenditures are $228.2 million. In the ed fund, there is a projected deficit of $20.5 million and a projected fund balance at the end of the school year of $19.6 million. A majority of the increase and about 1.2 million of deficit was realized in this fund. This was due to a mid-year increase of pay to both prayer pros and teaching assistants. We do recognize that the work that these employees provide to our students is extremely valuable, and the district honored that this year with those pay increases. But they did contribute to the increase in the deficit. There was also a need to add additional staff in special ed services this year as well. Additionally, we have received less in CPPRT money than what was budgeted. This possibly could be close to about $3 billion less. We are expecting two more CPPRT payments, and they will come in April and May. Historically, those last two payments will be between 25 and 30% of the total payments, but currently, we have only received about 50% of the CPPRT money that we were expected to get. So that has also contributed a little to the deficit. In O and M, the revenues were $19.6 million, and our expenditures are $21.1 million. There is a projected deficit of $1.5 million, but that has actually gone down from the tentative budget by about $65,000. The projected fund balance is $2.5 million. In the transportation fund, revenues are at $14.9 million and expenditures are at $16.2 million. There was a planned deficit in this one. We do have a lower amount of revenues in this fund due to a lower proration than what was expected at the beginning of the year, with revenues coming in about $600,000 less than what was expected. We also intentionally put less money from CPPRT into this fund. Because it did have a pretty hefty fund balance, we knew we could spend down this fund balance and allocate the CPPRT money to other funds. Expenditures have also decreased in the transportation fund by about $200,000 since the tentative budget. This causes a projected deficit of $1.4 million and a fund balance of $5.3 million. Again, that is one of our highest fund balances of all of our funds. The last two funds, which are IMRF and the TORT funds, are outside of our operating funds, but nonetheless, they're important for us to keep an eye on because they could affect our annual financial report, financial profile, if they have a negative fund balance. In the IMRF fund, revenues are at $7.6 million. Expenditures were at $7.3 million. There was a surplus of $270,000 and a projected fund balance of $3.1 million. In our TORT fund, and our TORT covers our security, insurance, any legal activities that we have, revenues were $6.3 million. Expenditures were $7.1 million. There's a deficit of $763,000 and an expected fund balance of $346,000. This concludes the FY '25 amended budget presentation. The budget is on file at the district office, and the public hearing on this amended budget will take place on Monday, May 5, at 2025. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
When you think about the fund balance, we've had this question asked before, why is it that we would carry a fund balance of 22% when we have a deficit as well?
Sure.
So, and then just what this...
So about 60% of our revenues come from local sources. Those are our property taxes. Our property taxes are paid to the district May to November. So we get paychecks from the county, May, June, and so on, and then November is our last one. So 60% of our income comes during those months. How we have it set up is from July to November, those paid for this FY '25, but then also May and June pay for the rest of FY '25. So we have from December to April where we do not get too much income. If you go back and look at our board reports, you'll see we have a whole lot of expenditures in ed fund and O and M fund, and not a lot of revenues coming in. So a fund balance is important because we need to use our cash, our cash flow, to get us through that period of no pays from December to April. Right now, our cash flow is pretty low, and that's something that we're looking at right now. Historically, the pre-COVID, the district has had to take out line of credits to meet maybe the last couple of bills payable because of cash flow. So it's important to have that hefty fund balance. We have that extra CPPRT money in 2021 that pushed our fund balance pretty high, and because of that, we haven't had to do line of credits for the... since, for the past three years. Since we don't have that money right now, we're looking at a line of credit just to get us to May, where we can get the first payment for property taxes and pay back that line of credit and move forward.
Thank you for that, because it's just a... It's a hard concept...
It is.
...to understand.
So this is, for whatever reason, I didn't see these numbers until just now, so I'm trying to digest them quickly. Our last 2425 budget presentation in the fall, we were projecting $223 million in revenue. Why is it 242 now?
Because in the tentative budget, we did not include the grants. So ESER, Title I, Title IV, Title II, mainly because those are... The federal grants that we get, they're flow-through money. We spend the money, we get the money. There is... They just offset each other. So those were not included there, included in the tentative budget. It's about $20 million, a little less. So if we include those in both the expenditures and the revenues, those both increase by about that $20 million.
Okay.
Yeah.
It would be nice to keep this apples to apples in the future. So then, in light of all of the numbers having shifted about $20 million, and it cancels out, what should we be honing in on here? Were there any surprises here from what our original projection was?
No.
And sorry, I was looking for the document in the middle of this, so I was kind of...
No, there was no surprises. We knew that we would have an increase in the ed fund just because of... due to those increases in salaries that we approved that started in November, but there was no out-of-the-norm increases or decreases. We were able to shift a couple expenditures and lines to other places, and we're still spending at that 95% rate.
And we're not voting tonight on this.
We're not voting, though.
No, that's all the questions I've got for now. If any other ones pop up, I'll send them to you or to Angie.
Sure.
Is there any other discussion? Okay. Hearing none. We'll move along to 10.3, which is the insurance recommendation for health, pharmacy, and TPA. I know we've got some people here in the crowd to take us to school, so...
All right. Good evening, members of the board. As part of the district benefit package, we offer health, dental, and vision insurance to all full-time employees. The district's health insurance is self-funded, meaning that those on the plan are responsible for the funding of the plan. This year is the last year under a current health insurance contract, and the insurance committee has diligently worked to rethink health insurance to potentially lower costs with the hope of passing that along to employees in the future. We believe that we have had a good start, and we hope that our endeavors will show this over the next year. Around November of this past year, Aaron Graves, our SDA president, brought the committee a name of a consultant. This consultant, Mike Allwood, who is over from Aaron right now, proposed a new way, at least a new way to us, about thinking about health insurance. After many meetings, the district, along with the insurance committee, decided to contract with Mr. Allwood for his services. Since then, Troxel, our insurance broker, specifically Sean McDonald, who is also in the audience, and Mike have been working diligently to bring us the insurance recommendation today. This started with an RFP process. As Mike has told us multiple times during this process, this was a very short timeline to get this process done, but thanks to the hard work of both Mike and Sean and the insurance committee, we can say that it is done. So what is different? I just want to touch on a couple things. Historically, the district has always used a one-stop-shop. I put that in quotation marks because that is just the vernacular that we're using in the insurance committee. I'm not really sure anybody else uses it. Mike brought it to us. That's what we're going to call it. A one-stop-shop, if you think to maybe like a Health Alliance, you sign up for Health Alliance, and that company will do the pharmacy. They might own the pharmacy. They might own the network, but they... It's like a... It's a one-stop-shop. We do everything with Health Alliance. We've historically used Health Alliance in the... Sorry, we've historically used a one-stop-shop in this district for decades. The new way of looking at something is what we're calling the best-in-class. So a best-in-class is, instead of looking at all the things that a one-stop-shop packages together, we want to split those out. And so what are those things? They are four things. The third-party administrator, which we'll call the TPA, the network, which is our health insurance, the pharmacy benefits manager, or the PBM, and then the fourth one is the stop-loss, which we'll hold on that later. I'll talk about that later on in the meeting. So what we decided to do, instead of sending out just an RFP for a one-stop-shop, we wanted to send out RFPs for every class of the four up there. So as a... Kind of on our timeline, if you go to the next slide, Julie. So the RFP process, a request for proposals, what we sent out. We started talking about this process in November, but the actual RFP process really started in January. We sent out RFPs in January, and we started to get those back from companies in February. With Mike and Sean sitting down for hours and hours and stacks and stacks and thousands of pages of work, they were able to really hone in on what these vendors were offering to us. We had 11 different vendors give us proposals. We had three one-stop shops, because we still put that out, and we let them bid or do a proposal as they wished. We had two independent health networks. We had three third-party administrators and three PBMs that offered us proposals. In March, the health insurance committee spent one and a half days sitting through presentations from these vendors and coming up with the pros and cons of each one, and we are happy to say that unanimously, the health insurance committee voted on and decided on three particular vendors, and those are the three that I'm going to present to you today. So what will our new plan look like? Well, we will still have our gold and silver plan as an option for our PPO, but we also wanted to offer a high deductible health plan or a health savings account as an option for employees as well. The committee wanted to make sure we still have the gold and silver plan because those are known choices to our employees, but an HSA may be desirable for our employees. So we want to give them the option, but we also know we're going to have to educate them, and we also know that might be not be something they're willing to step into yet. They may in the future. So there will be three options for coverage this year. Here are proposed vendors for the next three years, FY '26, '27, and '28. For our third-party administrator, Consociates Health, they are a company out of Decatur. This will be our company that kind of is the middleman between the district and our health network and our PBM. They are the go-to person. They are the ones that our employees will call if we have questions about their bills. We found that their location to Springfield was very favorable. They were more than willing to come over and talk to us. They were available for phone calls multiple times, just kind of on the drop of a hat, and we felt like their call center would be a very robust option for our employees. For our pharmacy benefits manager, Smith RX was the choice. There would be minimal disruption to service with about 98% of coverage, and existing network still covered, and Consociates will work with any employees that may experience a disruption in their plan. Aetna is our healthcare network. Again, there's minimal disruption to the plan with about 98.4% coverage. Along with the Aetna network, there will also... Along with the Aetna network, there will also come with what is being termed as Springfield Clinic Advantage. This is a new plan. They're partnering with Springfield Clinic. And with Springfield Clinic Advantage also comes access to the Barnes Jewish Care Network out of St. Louis. With these two plans, employees will have the options to go to both Springfield Clinic and Barnes Jewish System with zero co-pays and a reduced deductible. So that is very, that is a good benefit for our employees. Again, there will be a vast need for education of our employees on these items, and so they can understand these new benefits. Also, Memorial Choice is not going away. They have been a partner with us for a long time. We still have two years on the Memorial Choice contract, so we're pleased to still be able to offer that to our employees. Memorial Choice offers zero co-pays and an employee assistance program, or EAP, to our employees at no charge. So those are two very good benefits. Our goal for, just timeline, each of these are a three-year contract with the ability to extend for one to two more years. So after year three, what we'd like to do is get a rotation where every year we do an RFP for maybe the TPA, then the next year PBM, then the next year for the the health. And we could decide on who we want to go out for an RFP at what time, so we could see what's working for us and what we want to see if there's other options out. So it won't, this process will not be as lengthy or as time-consuming as it was this year, because we plan to spread that out. So here is the proposed gold, silver, and HSA plan, including the deductibles. Just kind of a chart that we've seen every year. Again, the gold and silver plan has not changed. We are not changing the premiums that employees are paying. We did add in the health savings account, the third column over. So that will be new, and that will be what we need to explain and really educate our employees on. You'll notice that the health savings account premiums are smaller, because there is a little bit more put onto the employees at some point. But they are smaller. But we also are going to say, as a district, we're going to contribute a portion of the employee's HSA contribution, and this mirrors kind of a normal HSA plan where the employee puts a contribution in for that.
Can you stay on the slide? I have a couple of questions. In the premium section, also just to clarify, I cannot vote on this due to a conflict of interest with my employer.
I just told him that this morning.
But, okay, so in the premium section, the two EE.
Yes.
Can you explain the, like, the difference? The 9374 slash 6456? Like, I understand that those are the premiums, but why are there two different numbers there?
Sure. So every employee in the district gets a certain amount of money each month to go towards premiums. And so the district pays for a portion of that premium, and then the employee pays for the rest of it. The two EE is a two-employee family, all right? So my wife and I both work in the district, so I get that benefit from the district. My wife's wife also gets that benefit from the district. So $93.74 would come from my check, and the 6456 would come from her check.
Okay. So like, if the two employee chose the HSA plan, one person would pay 6556, and the other person would pay zero?
Yes.
Okay. And then another question. So you said that the district offsets a portion of the premiums. Do we do that for, like, single, single plus one, all of them, or just employee to employee?
Oh, are you saying offsets the premium?
Like, so, okay, so if I look at the gold, single, 6456, that's the full premium? Or is the district paying some of that premium?
That is a premium for only the employee. The district pays, so every employee in the district gets the same amount applied to their premiums.
Okay. So the employee pays 6456, and the district pays whatever?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, obviously, I can't sit on the insurance committee, but I I'd really suggest that we look at a staggered premium for our employees. It's just not ethical, in my opinion, that our lowest-level employees and our highest-level employees are paying the same premium rate, so.
If if I can jump in there, I think that observation that you've made is why we are at this point with this totally different model. I would say since 2019, since I joined the board, it seemed like healthcare has been in a dire situation. And then it got even worse through COVID, because it was not only the premiums increasing, but all the delayed services made it hard to really make sense from one year to the next. So I don't want to cut you off too far, but your your observation is spot on. And there's got to got to be a little more equity there, and I believe that's what they're all working towards.
Can you talk a little bit about the members of the committee? Like, I know you guys keep talking about the insurance committee, but who is that?
Sure. I'll get to that in another slide, but we'll get, there are, there are members from each of our bargaining groups. There are members from administration. Mr. Miller is on the insurance committee. Troxel sits on the insurance committee, and Mike is on the insurance committee.
Okay.
There is about.
And we have other members in the crowd as well.
Yes, yeah. So I see.
How many?
I see six people.
It fills this room when we have a meeting.
Okay. And y'all voted unanimously? All 35 of you?
I don't vote. I don't, I don't vote.
One more question. So in the HSA section, where you have, like, the three amounts, like, 3,300 deductible, 6,600, 9,900? So that's what, single?
Single plus one, family.
Okay. So single plus children is within single plus one as well, or are they within family?
They're in the family.
Okay.
So it's, on our, on our benefits page, it's single plus spouse.
I think, I think I'm done on this slide.
Okay.
Sorry.
So as the insurance committee looked at our options, we were definitely focused on savings, savings to the plan, but also service to our employees. We wanted to make sure we minimize our disruptions, and we feel like these vendors will do that. Again, there are no increases to premiums this year. We do anticipate that there will be savings to the plan, but we need to have a year to actually realize that savings. Currently, the insurance fund, self-funded, is in negative, and it lives in our ed fund, which kind of affects our ed fund balance negatively as well. We hope to bring that deficit to zero and then start passing that savings along to employees, or at least negate any insurance increases in the near future. The purpose of the self-insurance fund is not to make money. That's not the goal. That's not the goal of the district. We just want it to be self-sustainable, so that the money that is brought in will pay for the the coverage. If this plan is approved tonight, so next steps, open enrollment will start at the end of April and continue through the middle of May. Our our TPA, which is Consociates, Troxel, and our consultant, will work on educating our employees on the health, high health savings account, and also with working with multiple providers, Memorial Choice, Springfield Clinic Advantage, Barnes Jewish System, everything. So myself, Justin Flanagan, who's our benefits manager, we are in constant contact with Troxel. Mike is going to be helping us with this as well, and then Consociates is already starting working on some education materials as well. The insurance committee, this is that fourth tier, the fourth class, that we kind of covered on the second slide, and I said, we'll hang on to that. We'll talk to it later. The insurance committee is going to bring to you a resolution in probably May regarding stop-loss insurance. Stop-loss is that fourth, fourth piece of the one-stop shop. Every single one-stop shop has offered stop-loss insurance. It's basically insurance for insurance. It's insurance for those very, very high-claimed members. We've decided to take that out of this right now, and we're going to shop around, do another RFP for just stop-loss. Troxel has actually started that RFP process already. We hope to have proposals come in, and we can pick the best one that will hopefully save us money in that as well. Stop-loss is very expensive, and sometimes it's beneficial to the district, and sometimes we've actually paid more out than than what we, it's insurance. So before I finish and move on to this slide, I would first like to thank our insurance committee. We have multiple members sitting down in the audience today. We have multiple members sitting up here. President Miller was on the, and Mrs. Gill were part of this committee, and and I want to thank you for your support through this whole process. You've given up a lot of your days and times. I also want to thank members from our union groups. We had the SDA, Local 15, PTSP, SPAA, Ball Charter. They were all present. So thank you for your help and support and your knowledge that you bring bring to the committee. Also, Sean, Troxel, and and Mike, thank you for guiding us in this process as well. So it's a definitely been a team effort. This is a new way of thinking of everything, and we are pretty confident that this will be good. So later on in the board meeting, you will be asked to approve the following based on the insurance committee's vote. We are going to recommend Consociates Health as our TPA, Aetna, along with Springfield Clinic and BJC, Barnes Jewish as our health network, and Smith RX as our PBM. Do you have any additional questions?
So who is our current TPA?
Cigna. Cigna is that one-stop shop, and they are the TPA. They also are the pharmacy pharmacy-based manager. And correct me if I'm wrong, but they're also, they're the health provider, but they use the Aetna network. No? They have their own network. Sorry, someone else was using the Aetna network. So they have their, they are the, they are all four of those things added together in one one-stop shop, along with the stop-loss insurance.
Would, I hate to put you in the hot seat, but would it be okay to hear a few words from Mr. Allwood, since he's here with us, just because I can't say enough good about what you've brought to the insurance committee? I think I've always been told, do a good job, take the credit. I would like to give you a chance to say something.
Hello, board, board members. I'm Mike Allwood. I'm doing this job as a consultant. My background, I was the labor co-chair of the city's healthcare management committee. Been on the committee since 99, and it's kind of how we got here. You guys budget, the city's budget for this fiscal year were pretty close, and they have roughly two times the members on their plan. So some of your members went to the city and said, how do you do it? I just retired from there, and they gave them my phone number and called me, and here I am. So I could tell you that we've been able to manage our costs in that arena over the last 30 years. We're beating projections where we should be today from all the pundits that have regulated us through the years. We should be twice where we're at. And this is just the start of what we're going to do. I'm going, I'm contracted with you guys through the end of the year, and if you want me, I'll I'll extend. But there, there's a lot of other stuff that we can do to make this plan work better by educating your members, by focusing on wellness, and a lot of other initiatives. But one of the things that didn't really get put out here, when you do the best-in-class, the the three we chose, hard numbers, they did come in the best. One of the one-stop shops came close, but they were also someone you've already worked with and had a lot of difficulty. They weren't very responsive. You had trouble getting reporting. You had a lot of issues. And as I explained to these guys, in the one-stop-shop world, the Blue Crosses, the Signas, United Healthcare, you guys are a little bitty fish in a great big pond. So they want your money, but they really don't care about your business. That that's just the way it is. With these guys, you guys are going to be a really big fish in a smaller pond, and the responsiveness for management, for getting the bills paid, for getting your reporting, for your memorial refunds is going to all be streamlined. And these guys all came with out-of-the-box thinking. And it, there's ways we can modify your plan to make it even better for the employees and more cost-effective for the district. But with your big Signas, Blues, et cetera, they'll tell you straight up, you, what you guys want to do doesn't conform to our existing business model. We're not going to create this just for you guys. Here's what we offer, take it or leave it. Consociates, we're meeting with them later this week to help build the high-deductible plan to meet our specifications. They said, whatever you guys want, this is your plan. That was a response from all three of these vendors. This is your plan. You tell us how it works, we'll build it, we'll make it work. So one of the things you're going to gain in this transition from the one-stop shop, with the big plans, these guys pay your bills, they discount your prices, they do your rebates. You have no idea what's going on. Now we're going to get reports from each piece. The people paying the bills aren't going to be the same people that priced the claims. So there's no way that they can keep a portion of your discounts or your rebates, because it's all separate. So all of the negotiated discounts, all of the negotiated rebates will now be coming back to you guys. In the past, a lot of those were being retained by the vendor. So it's been a challenging few months. Like I said, this, at the city, this process normally was a nine-to-12-month process. We just did it in three months. I was very nervous, but we pulled it off. So I'm happy to be a part of this. I'm happy to be working with the school district. I hope I helped, and I hope that it brings you guys' costs down significantly, at the same time enhancing a benefit and helping you guys retain employees, because you're going to end up having a really good healthcare that both sides of the aisle can afford. So that's my goal in being your consultant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Just, again, I can't say enough good about what you've brought to this committee. I wish you could have seen his line of questioning, Mr. Allwood's line of questioning, and just the universal look around the room of, wow, like, these are questions we've never even heard. And I think a good way to describe it would be like, somebody who doesn't know about cars is just going to get their car fixed, and the mechanic gives them a bill, and then you just settle it. And then you have someone who knows what they're looking at, saying, wow, you're really getting ripped off here. You just got breaks, and you paid $1,000, you know? And they start picking it apart. But not only that, getting us into a positive revenue situation and having that flexibility, taking control of your money, and then being able to negotiate. I mean, there's just so many good things on the horizon. And so I just wanted to give you a few seconds to to take the the credit.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I guess another shout-out would be to Springfield Clinic and Memorial for being players, trying to help us and and agreeing to look at things differently. We really appreciate that, and it's going to add even better benefits to our staff.
Yep. All right. Were there any other questions at this point about insurance? Okay. Well, thank you for the presentation. We'll move along to consent action items, 11.1. Superintendent Gill?
President Miller and members of the board, it is my recommendation that we accept, let's see, I need my sheet. Can I look at it real quick?
Sure.
I lost mine. I recommend approval of 11.2 through 11.10.
Any discussion? So I would ask about 11.6 and on, but you kind of touched on 11.6 earlier.
Yeah, 11.6 is just a bid for the Lee Field new restroom area. 11.7 is a memorandum of understanding with Mid-America Carpenter's Regional Council Apprentice Training Fund. This will allow the district to have an apprenticeship program for carpenters, and it is a way to get more carpenter candidates to work in the district, see if they like working here, and hopefully be future employees. Thanks to Mr. Grossin for helping be creative and looking for how we can help maybe some of our graduates from District 186 get apprenticeships, and then hopefully be employed by the district if we, when, if we have openings. The annual cost of this to participate is $4,500 annually, and we anticipate some of the students who go through the construction trades will benefit from this opportunity. 11.8 is a resolution regarding membership in the Illinois High School Association. We annually approve this membership. 11.9 is travel for Southeast High School, ASE. The high school ASE Black History Group has. The high school ASE Black History Group has requested permission to travel to Memphis, Tennessee to tour the National Civil Rights Museum, April twelfth through thirteenth. They are going to raise the funds. I've actually been to this. It's amazing. So, I'm really excited they're getting to do this. Eleven point ten, consultant agreement for Kevin Jones, Pathways to Restorative Practices. This is a multi-school consultant agreement for Franklin, Grant and Washington. It's in-person training. It will be at each of the schools and there are dates that were provided in your bulletin. And I think that's all for the consent agenda tonight.
Mr. Winn on eleven point eight, are they going to call them both ways?
Oh.
We think that they'll be fair.
Thank you, Mr. Winn.
For eleven ten, can we further explain like why Franklin has ten days and Grant has eight, but Washington only has one?
Can you answer that question? It's a continuation, but let me, yeah.
Good evening. So, it's based upon, can you hear me? Okay. The, based upon their school improvement plan. So, we have all of these monies flowing from the state board through our federal grants to supply those funds for the school. So, they, as we talked about the SMART Goal One, they're all focused on culture and parts of their school, but that plays out differently based upon what their specific goals are. So, they work with Mr. Jones on creating those specific plans just for their schools. But we just put it all together in one because they have those additional monies and working with students on the adult support, or excuse me, staff on the adult support as well as what they need for students is how it just plays out based upon the individual needs of the schools.
Yeah, it's ten oh three money. We had to get approval from the Illinois State Board of Education to use that money in a specific way. Each school has different amounts and it's not based on enrollments or anything. It's just, it's just different counts on where they're at in their process of school improvement. Franklin, per se, didn't need to have a learning partner. So, they were able to use a little more money for consulting, which was a good thing for them. The other schools, they see, had to have partners, so they weren't able to get that many days.
Thanks.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, so we had a motion and a second. So, Ms. Hammers, could you please take the roll?
Lissette.
Aye.
Gilmore. Imes.
Aye.
Leal Wolf. Mars.
Aye.
Miller. Austin.
Aye.
That is seven aye votes.
Okay, twelve point one, approval of personnel recommendations. Ms. Sherman?
President Miller and members of the board, the superintendent recommends adoption of the personnel recommendations as presented.
Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Hammers?
Gilmore.
Aye.
Imes.
Aye.
Leal Wolf.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Miller. Austin.
Aye.
Lissette.
Aye.
That is seven aye votes.
Okay. We have some people we need to recognize.
We do. We have a couple of people in the crowd that I'd like to give a call-out to. One is Renee Johnson. She's at the back. Thank you, Renee, for being here tonight. And her role is moving from coordinator of math, science and technology and she will be the new chief of federal funds, replacing Larry, who's going to retire this summer. So, congratulations, Larry, but welcome aboard, Renee, and thanks for willing to take this. And also for learning the ropes and still continuing your job. We appreciate your service. Vincent Turner is currently the principal of Washington Middle School and he is now going to be the assistant director of human resources. So, congratulations. That includes a whole bunch of stuff. We'll tell him about what it's all about tomorrow after he accepts tonight. No, I'm just kidding. But thank you for coming on board. We definitely appreciate that. And just to explain a little further, we did approve Jennifer Hansen Russell to be the assistant director in an interim status and this summer, when, like July one, you'll turn over and be the director of HR, which will replace Gina Sherman, who's going to be retiring in the fall. And there's just a lot of things to be trained and do and work with the school year calendar. So, congratulations, all three of you, and thanks for coming on board. We'll get a seat over there for you next time.
Congrats to everybody except for Gina. We're not letting you leave.
There's that, but another day.
All right. So, twelve point two has been removed. We'll move forward to twelve point three, approval of the preparation of the fiscal year twenty-six tentative budget.
So moved.
Second.
We may need something read.
Mr. Miller?
Mr. Miller?
President Miller, members of the board, the superintendent recommends adoption of the following resolution. Be resolved by the Board of Education of School District Number 186 in the County of Sangamon, State of Illinois, that Mrs. Jennifer Gill and Mr. Stephen Miller are hereby appointed to prepare a tentative budget for the said school district for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-five and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, which tentative budget shall be filed with the Secretary of the Board.
Okay, so we had a motion, Mr. Mars, and a second from Ms. Imes. Is there any discussion? And again, this is the very preliminary phase, like this is-
This is giving me permission to start working on the budget.
And then, it will, we'll have something in September. Okay.
Probably before that, but vote in September.
Right. Well, it has to be in September.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none? Ms. Imes or Ms. Hammers?
Imes.
Sorry, almost gave you an upgrade.
Imes.
Aye.
Leal Wolf.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Lissette.
Aye.
Gilmore. That is seven aye votes.
Okay, twelve point four, approval of a resolution regarding the proposal for health insurance.
So moved.
Mr. Miller?
President Miller, members of the board, the superintendent recommends adoption of the following resolution. Whereas on June first, nineteen ninety-nine, the district converted to a self-funded insurance program and whereas the district's insurance consultant, district staff and the district's insurance committee have reviewed and analyzed the group medical insurance submission from Aetna, a district insurance bidder. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the board hereby approves and accepts the Aetna self-funded recommendation for the contractual year beginning June first, two thousand twenty-five and ending May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
We had a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Ms. Hammers?
Wolf.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Lissette.
Present.
Gilmore.
Aye.
Imes.
Aye.
That is six aye votes and one present.
Okay, twelve point five, approval of a resolution regarding the proposal for insurance third-party administrator. Mr. Miller?
President Miller, members of the board, the superintendent recommends adoption of the following resolution. Whereas on June first, nineteen ninety-nine, the district converted to a self-funded insurance program and whereas the district's insurance consultant, district staff and the district's insurance committee have reviewed and analyzed the third-party administrator, TPA, submission from Consociate Health, a district bidder. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the board hereby approves and accepts the Consociate Health TPA recommendation for the contractual year beginning June first, two thousand twenty-five and ending May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Ms. Hammers?
Mars.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Lissette.
Present.
Gilmore.
Aye.
Imes.
Aye.
Leal Wolf.
Aye.
That is six aye votes and one present.
Okay, twelve point six, approval of a resolution regarding the proposal for pharmacy benefits management. Mr. Miller?
President Miller, member of the board, the superintendent recommends adoption of the following resolution. Whereas on June first, nineteen ninety-nine, the district converted to a self-funded insurance program and whereas the district's insurance consultant, district staff and the district's insurance committee have reviewed and analyzed the group's pharmacy benefits management insurance submission from Smith RX, a district insurance bidder. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the board hereby approves and accepts the Smith RX PBM recommendation for the contractual year beginning June first, two thousand twenty-five and ending May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Ms. Hammers?
Miller.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Lissette.
Present.
Gilmore.
Aye.
Imes.
Aye.
Leal Wolf.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
That is six aye votes and one present.
Okay, twelve point seven, approval of a resolution authorizing the dedication of a right-of-way along Cornell Avenue to the city of Springfield, Illinois.
Yes, there was something in your bulletin about this, but Mr. Grossen, could you just explain where, what the right-of-way means?
The right-of-way is basically just south of the practice field off of Cornell. We constructed a sidewalk there, so basically the city will control the property and any potential liability with that property. So, it's in our best interest to give them the right-of-way.
But for the first time ever now, we have a sidewalk connecting the neighborhood, connecting the neighborhood all the way to the school. So, walkers will have, and then anybody parking back there at night for a game can have a sidewalk to walk on.
Correct.
Second.
And so, just to make sure I'm clear, this is the upfront cost for us and the maintenance for the city?
Yes.
All right. Any other-
Maintenance and liability.
Maintenance and liability and potential liability. Yes.
Liability.
Any, any other discussion? Okay. Ms. Hammers?
Yes, I just want to confirm. Ms. Imes, did you make the motion?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Austin.
Aye.
Lissette.
Aye.
Gilmore.
Aye.
Imes.
Aye.
Leal Wolf.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
That is seven aye votes.
Okay, twelve point eight, student discipline. Superintendent Gill?
Yes, President Miller, members of the board, it is my recommendation that one tenth-grade student be hereby expelled from further attendance at Springfield High School through the end of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year with a program.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Ms. Hammers?
Lissette.
Aye.
Gilmore. Imes.
Aye.
Leal Wolf. Mars.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
That is seven aye votes.
Okay, this brings us to thirteen point one. Our next regular meeting will be Monday, April twenty-first at six-thirty. Thirteen point two, upcoming events. We have a lot of them. Just to remind, a couple that were mentioned earlier. Tomorrow at four-thirty PM, Spartan Field ribbon cutting. If anybody's available, please swing by. Also, tomorrow, April eighth, is the All-City Music Festival at seven o'clock at Sangamon Auditorium at UIS. We are off-school April eighteenth and twenty-first due to the holiday. And then, from April seventh to the twenty-fifth, that's spring break for balanced calendar schools. Finally, Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, is kindergarten preview night, six PM to seven PM at your local elementary school. And as superintendent said, you can find your school locator on the website. This is for any family that has children who will turn five on or before September first. That brings us to thirteen point three, which is the FOIA report is attached to the electronic school board. And finally, adjournment. Does any board member have anything else?
Hey, just a shout-out to Mr. Sperry back there. I heard it's his birthday.
Hey, happy birthday.
On a board meeting night, what was I thinking? And, and the final, final game of the NCAA.
What a way to close it out.
Sorry about that.
Any board member have anything else? Okay, we'll stay adjourned at eight-thirty-one. Thank you.